All right, so welcome to the Housing Needs Assessment. Cuddy Executive Ladder did release this in November of last year. We released it right immediately ahead of time to our nonprofit housing organizations because the topic is just of such importance to them. We've now met with all the municipalities, well, we met with the five, the group, the regional discussions about of the municipalities, encouraging them to take this up, you know, and understand it. We've now gone out to a bunch of other groups now, so you guys are one of those groups that we're trying to get to. When we took this to Westchester County Association last week, and Tim was there in the room for the presentations, one of the first questions we got asked was, "How many units does each municipality have to do?" Because I want to help them get there. Well, that's, the municipalities have a totally different take on that. You know, so again, it is not a allocation plan. Every municipality does not get told how many units they need to get to. It is an assessment of their needs. And unlike previous, this is the third time we've done a housing needs assessment in Westchester. We did one back in the early 90s, Rutgers University did it, we did one in 2004. And that one in 2004 really took us through 2015, what the need was. All right? But the difference between those and this one was, the votes were countywide study. It was a countywide need, it was a countywide number. It didn't tell each municipality what their issues were. This report is very, very different. This one is so data-driven. There is data in here, including in the appendix, the whole document is 644, 640 pages. Included in the appendix is a seven-page analysis of each municipality of their data. Okay? So that Samaritan can't say, "Well, that's the countywide number, it's not mine." There are numbers in there. Their affordability, their income levels, and so it takes every topic, and it goes on by the existing housing stock, it goes by demographics, it goes by income and affordability. So it goes to special needs populations, it covers a whole host of different topics. By the way, Tim has this presentation, so he would have the ability to get it out to anybody who's interested in it. All right? So don't necessarily worry about taking pictures of the screen if you don't, if you really want the whole presentation, you're welcome to it. So if you don't mind, let's move on. So let's start with the fact that, as I already said, I'm going to tie this to the census, you know I'm prepared for that. So Westchester is home to almost a million people, 975 there, thereabouts. Go ahead. We like to start with this quote, because we did ask a couple people out in the field, out in the Westchester field, about why is this undertaking this study important? And Bill Cuddy, we truly think, came up with one of the best quotes for us. And so, "Westchester's long- and short-term economic viability is predicated upon our housing inventory meeting the demands of our workforce." You will see, I will tie this to workforce and to jobs multiple times, okay? "The county executive's report demonstrates our dereliction in delivering adequate, accessible, and affordable housing. It's a call to action. If we don't address the miscarriage of our policies and perspectives, we fail our families and workers. The problem may be intractable, but it isn't insurmountable." Let's start right with the economics here. More people commute in to work in Westchester than the people who live and work here. Okay? 199,000 people are commuting, are clogging our highways, are filling up the trains and the buses to get to work, to get to the jobs here in the county. Many of them have to do that because they can't afford to live in Westchester. All right? Almost as many people are commuting out. But you know what? Westchester was built as a community, we've grown, we grew from New York City north and from the Hudson River east. So we, we were always a bedroom community for New York City. So that number doesn't surprise us. But the number that there's almost as many people commuting into Westchester as commuting out, that was a surprise. 90,000 people live in poverty in this county. Now, this was, this, the report is done right after the last recession was. So we have a lot of people who truly, truly never, ever thought they were going to have lost their job, and did, in the last recession. So that number grew from 2000 to 2017, almost 14%. So we're going to go into some housing statistics. So there's a number, 345, 1,885 housing units, as I said before, we know there's a lot more than that, but we have to go with the official statistics that are out there. 81% of our housing stock was built before 1979, was built before lead-based paint was banned. That's an important number for us, because it actually supported the county's application for a $4.1 million grant to HUD to control lead-based paint. We still have a lot of lead-based paint in this county. We have a lot of children with elevated blood levels, because they live in that housing that has lead-based paint. All right? Just to give you some sense of the size difference, Village Buchanan has the smallest, with 864 units. It's so under, you know, the size difference is so huge between that and the city of Yonkers with over 82,000 housing units. This was a surprise. Westchester, many people think of Westchester as, as the bedroom is the homeownership community. You move out of New York City because you want to own your home, go to the good schools. We are below the national average for homeownership. I know, right below, I get that. But we are below the national average. And, and the averages, by the way, are a high in the town of Newcastle, again, this is why I say the data's out there for every municipality. There's a high in Newcastle where 92% of the people who live in Newcastle own their home, to a low of only 35% in the village of Sleepy Hollow. All right? So the data's in there for each of the different municipalities. So again, because we're below the national average for ownership, we're above, just slightly above. It's always important for us to have a conversation about affordable housing to also include subsidized housing. And so, just to get an update, we are losing public housing units. Many of them have been converted over the years, but we are now down to fewer than 2,500 public housing units in this county. All right? Those are the housing units that were built for the poorest of the poor, because they could literally live in there even with no income, and the government was subsidizing. Section 8, those numbers have not grown. Sequestration has not helped us, the federal budgets and the, and the lack of extra funding put in the budgets. But for the first time, we have ETPA data. We now know that there are 34,000 ETPA, or Emergency Tenement Protection Act, units in this county and 1,700 buildings. All right? We start to get into the issues of our housing. So we have 4,500 units that are severely overcrowded. That means more than one and a half persons per room, not per bedroom, per room. Okay? We have 2,500 substandard units, that means they don't have, they don't have working kitchens and baths. But the biggest number by far is we have 72,000 households who are severely cost-burdened. That means that they are paying more than 50% of their income toward their rent. If I look at how many households are paying more than 30% of their income toward their rent, that number jumps. That number is over 140,000 people, households, when we start talking about the, paying more than 30% of their income toward their rent. This is a new picture. We've never really had to worry about foreclosures before, but since 2008, foreclosures have hit this county hard, particularly in northern Westchester. Now, many people will say, "Well, wait, the most number of foreclosures was in the city of Yonkers." And you're absolutely right. Over 1,700 units have been foreclosed upon in the city of Yonkers. But when I look at the number of foreclosures in the community as a percentage of their total housing units, we tell an entirely different story. Only 2% of Yonkers is, housing units have been foreclosed upon. But look how it has affected northern Westchester. We saw the city of Mount Vernon in there. But Peekskill, almost 5% of the housing units in Peekskill have been foreclosed upon. And then Yorktown, Cortlandt, Lewisboro, and North Salem have all been so significantly hit by foreclosures, and they're still recovering. Because many, New York has the longest process for foreclosures, 444 days. So there are many units where the banks haven't taken it over yet, nobody's living there, and the local municipalities are dealing with that.
Well, what do you want us to get from that slip?
Hold on, hold on, I'm going to get to it. I'm going to get to it. Don't worry, right now I'm giving you data, I'm going to get to what's, what we're doing about this. Because the county has taken its first steps already, okay? So, let's talk about housing affordability. And again, this is the, at the time that the report was done, housing afford, a single-family house, the median sale price for a single-family house was $650,000. About two weeks ago, maybe two and a half weeks ago, a report came out that the median sale price is now $699,000. All right? So the picture's gotten even worse, because income limits haven't gone up. To be able to only just put the 5% down and cover your closing costs, you need $71,500 to be able to afford that house at $650,000. Which means that to cover the balance of the purchase price with your mortgage, you need an annual income of $235,000. When we talk about a family of four and affordable, and what they're earning, at 80% of median income, that family of four only earns $93,650. Even at 100% of AMI, of area median income, they earn $117,000. There is a gap at 80% of almost $400,000 of that household of four being able to afford the median sale price in Westchester. Again, every municipality has different numbers, the numbers are in the report. So you can see the median sale price in Yonkers, and you can see it in Cortchester, and you can see it in every town and city and village in this municipality. So it's not, I'm giving you the countywide numbers to be able to help you understand. And so let's talk about renters. The median renter, because renters make generally, renters generally have lower incomes, the median renter's income is $36,690. The two-bedroom fair market rent, which is only set at 40% of the, of the average rents, the two-bedroom FMR is $1687. But when that family earning $36,000 and $36,690, suspending only 30% of their income toward their rent over the course of 12 months, they only have $917 a month to pay their rent. There's a gap to even just be able to afford the 40% rent level of $770 a month. But, there are three, the good news is, there are three communities in Westchester where the renters' incomes do make the, and the rent, the cost of housing, the rent cost of rental housing in those communities is in fact affordable. Bronxville, Newcastle, and Palm matter, all very high-income areas, so the renters' incomes are very high in those communities, which is why they can afford their income. So our conclusion is, and we're going to get to where we're going from here. So the great, the total gross need for affordable housing is 82,000 units. Now, if I just left it at that, you'd all just walk out of the door, put your heads down, and just say, "Well, we're done. We can't, there's nothing we can do." But that's not, many of these people are in fact living in decent, safe, and sanitary housing. They're just not being able to afford where they are living. All right? So there's no question that the greatest need is for rental assistance or some subsidy to be able to cover their costs. We have many seniors who are house-rich but income-poor. They're paying more than 50% of their income toward their housing cost, but they own their house. All right? So, but we've also demonstrated that there's a need for rent, for housing rehabilitation, there's a need for foreclosure counseling and eviction prevention. So when we actually boiled it down to, okay, well, what's the need for new housing units, new affordable housing units? We actually take that number, the 82,000, and we get down to 11,700. And that's based on three factors. Number one is those 4,500 severely overcrowded households, because in that, in that situation, you've got too many people living in that housing unit. Very clearly, you would need to create another housing unit to take the burden off that housing unit. We also, at the time of the study was done, had 846 homeless families. They have no home. It's not decent, safe, and sanitary, they have no home at all. We need to make sure we're accounting for our homeless population. And then the last part of this is the 6,300 families who have registered on the county's Home Seeker website. That's the county's affordable housing website, where we ask and collect information from people who are actively looking for affordable housing in Westchester County. We right now have over 18,000 families that signed up, looking for affordable housing in Westchester County. But, some of them already live in Westchester. So they're counted in the other number, that rent assistance number, okay? But 6,300 of them, at the time that the sense, that this report was done, told us they were not living in Westchester. In fact, many of them may likely be some of those 199,000 people that are commuting into Westchester. They can't afford to live here, but they might be working here. All right? So that's, so those three numbers get us to the 11,700 need. Now, I'm actually going to jump for a little bit and talk about a New York City report that came out, the Geography of Jobs, because the link is indisputable, that without housing, we are not getting jobs. Okay? And so, in 2018, the New York City Regional Planning Office came out with the Geography of Jobs report, you're going to see in a second why this is so important. Clearly, there is a link between housing and jobs. And housing, production of housing in, in Westchester and in the entire Hudson Valley has slowed down, and we are not keeping up with the region. Okay? If you don't mind, jump to the next slide, and then we're going to have to go back. Between 2010 and 2017, the entire Hudson Valley only issued 25,000 building permits. The entire Hudson Valley. And if you know the area and all, that, there's a lot of dots up along the I-84 corridor. Okay? So Orange County, Dutchess County, they issued a lot of building permits, okay? Now, in that same time period, northern New Jersey has issued 151,000 building permits. And it's not even easy access to get into New York City from northern New Jersey, okay? But in the same time period where we issued 25,000, they issued 151,000, and New York City has blown us all away, but they've issued 164,000 building permits. So what does that mean? If you don't mind, go back to the slide. Thank you. What it means is, New York City is certainly keeping ahead of our job growth. We know, northern New Jersey, New Jersey doesn't have Seeker, we're not going to start in that discussion, but we know that obviously that's an issue, it makes it easier to build housing in New Jersey because they don't have Seeker. But, what it means is, our workforce is aging. And in fact, the Housing Needs Assessment tells you that every municipality in Westchester lost between the population of those who are 30 to 44. We lost our younger workforce. And if we don't turn this around, we're going to find ourselves really, really in dire straits. Because our over-85 population has grown tremendously, some municipalities saw growth of over 200% of their population of over 85. Okay? That's, again, the data's in the report, I'm just tying it all together for you. And so what's it doing? There's, I come down to the iconic Parkway, there's a lot of people on that iconic Parkway with me, all right? Not, not how quiet it was 30 years ago, or 30-plus years ago, when I started commuting up north. There's a lot of people putting a strain on our transit system, our highways, our roadways, our trains, our buses, public transportation, because of the fact that they have to commute further. So now if you can go, thank you. Bottom line is, the need is all over Westchester. There is not a single municipality that had a good report, except for those three that had venture, that had affordable rentals in their communities with their renters. All right? But every other category, there's, there's, there's data in there. And that tells us, again, the need is all over Westchester. So what are we doing about it? Getting to your point in hand. So moving forward, so in 2020, the county executive has said, "We've got to do something." And so he put over $20 million into this year's budget to be able to start addressing things. First and foremost, we put $35,000 into education and training to train people, we want to get more homeowners, we're below the national average. So, but understand something, with the last foreclosure, this is why I'm tying it together again, foreclosures are people, the people who have been foreclosed upon may not now have the credit to be able to buy that new home yet. And so in reality, they're putting an extra strain on our rental market, because they're renting units because they can't afford, they don't have the credit to buy. But they might have more income, so they can pay higher rents. Okay? So there's an extra strain on our rental system right now because of that. So we got to get more people back into the world of homeownership, because not, not for nothing, but one day all of you are going to want to sell your homes. And we have to make sure that there is a, you know, the housing market can actually handle that. So we're putting $300,000 toward housing stabilization, sorry, I'm talking too fast. That's eviction prevention and foreclosure counseling. Because again, we don't want to keep the system going with foreclosures. There are still thousands of units in the system right now in Westchester that are still being subject for foreclosure. They're just in the process, okay? And then employer assistance, we're going to, we're kicking off a new program this year where we're going to start working with employers to see how can we meet their employees' needs to encourage people to move to Westchester. Whether it's providing down payment assistance or helping them in some other way. We're going to work with specific employers who have indicated a willingness to put their own money forward to be able to work with us to meet their needs of their employees. So the county executive has also put $10 million in our new home plan program, some of our developers here have used that program. That's where the county buys the land for an affordable housing development and sells it to developer for $1. So we have effectively taken the cost of land out of the development budget, because the county will pay it for you. All right? He's also set aside $10 million in our housing implementation fund. This is an infrastructure fund, where the funds go to the local municipality to help them provide other infrastructure related to providing the affordable housing. And then we've put $500,000 aside for pre-development and feasibility, because there are many municipalities that don't know how to take the first step, because they don't have any of their own money set aside, where they might say, "You know what? There's a parking lot over there, why can't we consider that for affordable housing, build over the parking lot?" But they don't know how to start. And so by putting aside some money for feasibility, we can help some of those municipalities with that process. All right? Since we go to land and zoning initiatives, there are essentially two different things that we're working on. Number one is, we now have an up-to-date database, because not only is the municipality what we already have, there are new municipalities or new, new horizons, they want to open their already, but many people want to know, "Where can I find it? Where can I apply for affordable housing?" And then, whoa, one more, go back. And then go back, because we're working with municipalities, many municipalities in Westchester are still so small that they don't have professional planners. They have planners who help them work, work on their planning boards and the voting board issues, but they don't have professional planners yet who can help them with their zoning ordinance. So we've started creating model ordinances so the municipalities can just adopt this, put it in their code, it becomes another opportunity to create more affordable housing opportunities, not necessarily de-restricted. But so the first one that we rolled out last year was model, was accessory planning units. I, my, I told, "Well, where are my children? I don't have my house, my four-bedroom house, I could actually create a wrestling arena." Of course, I would do it legally, but, you know, my husband wouldn't, that aside. Believe me, that's a, you know. So anyway, so model is actually only, only right now, like in 14 or 17 municipalities allow accessory planning units. Okay? Not all of them do, because they don't have somebody to help them write that. We've written the model ordinance for them. They can adopt wholesale, they can take the provisions that work for their municipality. So we are encouraging more municipalities to in fact adopt, to provide accessory apartments. All right? Next, we're working on senior housing. Can I tell you that in 12 municipalities, we found 15 different senior housing ordinances in this county? In 12. So there are a couple municipalities that have multiple senior housing ordinances. Again, that's really confusing, so we're just going to give, we're going to put a model out there. We're going to give them a model ordinance about parking requirements, because there aren't, in fact, we've seen certain places where the parking requirement is just too high. And as we all know, parking drives generally, how many units you get. It's not always just the height of the building, it's really how many parking spaces you can be provided with. So, and then the last one, we're going to, we know we're going to be working on is about, we did in 2004, 2005, a study about office park housing, and adaptive, so we want to be able to scan that down and take a look at a lot of our old campus housing that's sitting naked right now, how we, how we might be able to build more housing in mixed commercial use, and the adaptive reuse of other buildings. I am done. So, obviously, there's a lot more to report, but I'm just giving you the highlights.
Yes. This is, this is just a suggestion. I noticed, I used to live in the city, and now I live up here. And you were talking about the building in Manhattan has, has a, compared to Westchester County. If you apply for a permit, a building permit, in New York City or in Westchester County, I want to kill the people in Westchester County. Specifically, New Rochelle. I mean, I can't tell you how easy it is to get one in New York City, and to get the work done correctly. Up here, it's like pulling teeth. I mean, it's not streamlined. I even went in there, I said, "Just tell us now what you want, we'll write you a check." And then there's no pamphlet saying, you know, requirements, they don't want to talk to you. And it's not just New Rochelle, I know it's Mount Vernon, I know it's Harrison, and it's all over the county.
It's a nightmare. And honestly, we have 43 systems in 43 municipalities, because every municipality controls their own zoning and their own handings. So we know, there are 43.
That's the problem. You want more of the control.
We know, we know. Which is why, again, we're trying to help them by streamlining some of their ordinances.
Talking about foreclosure.
We'll get you to the corner, we're going to Mr. Taro's.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
You have foreclosures. Mount Vernon has one of the higher foreclosure rates. The problem is, the seniors there can't afford the taxes. So you cannot solve anything, and they're going to jump 7% higher with the new mayor coming in, which means more seniors are going to live, leave the town. What, what the previous mayor called him, what was the term he used for the empty houses?
Zombie homes.
Zombie homes. And I've bought zombie homes, okay, in Mount Vernon. Why? A little nothing house, 15, 20,000 in taxes. So government is the problem. Government is not the solution, clearly. And all these statistics are very interesting, but they don't go anywhere unless you can solve the problem. And that's what I don't see with this. We have this problem, how are we going to solve it? We need to lower taxes considerably in this entire state. We've got to run the whole socialistic, the politics that politicians have come up with, socialism. I, I come from Greece, we've had it. You see, we were, we were broke for 10 years because of socialism. We were giving everybody money. Christmas, Santa, Christmas bones doubled, Easter doubled. Where was the money coming from? The same thing here. You're talking about all these poor people, you can't get taxes from them. So what do you do to New York? You create even more stringent rent regulations. So those of us who are able to pay the taxes, because what my wife goes to City Hall to pay taxes, she sees all the elderly there, "Can I pay a little now and maybe a little later?" And, and you know, they're crying and whatnot. Government's not helping anyone. And these statistics are pointless, because they don't need the help, and they don't need to solving the problem. We've got to get to the problems, solve the problems once again. And that's where politi, all of us are going to get fed up. Even the, even the poor are going to realize, all these new laws, not going to help them one bit, because they've been tried before. History shows us, nowhere, the socialism worked, you got to have a little capital in the system, someone has to produce something. And I'm an immigrant kid that slept on three chairs for five years, because we had no money. So I'm not talking about with a silver spoon in my mouth to begin with. So, you know, we work hard, we get to where we have to go, if we want to get there. But not all of us want to go there, but anyway, I'll leave it at that. But you got to come up with some solutions, you know, to fix it.
Yeah.
Okay? Here we are, smooth here.
I just want to say, well, I saw all your statistics and all the money that you're spending to all these new programs, but I don't see that any one of them is helping the people of today. We have the foreclosures today, we have the homelessness today. Those monies are not going to help. What is the county going to do for the people in Westchester today and now? I don't want to think about five years from now. I don't want to be homeless for five years. I don't see any of those solutions doing a present-day resolution to help the people of our county. And I'm really disappointed in that. I really am.
All right. I will tell you that the eviction, the eviction and foreclosure rationale is there, is there today. It's there to help people so they don't lose their own, and they don't get in the system pile, all right? Because we don't want that problem.
How many do you remember with the Chalons? The Chalons, and it's kind of all of you. I started my career managing Chalons, Chalons, Chalons. How dead is that concept? In terms of getting multiple dwellings built, I don't know much to be able to achieve, the number that you're looking to do by building individual houses. If I achieve that by multiple dwellings, midwives, how dead is the concept of the Chalons? You know, state, well, of course, you can't in a city, but state Chalons, question?
The state has, has been putting a lot of money toward the construction for affordable housing, but it's generally through loan income housing tax credit program, all right, through our state housing finance agencies, through the housing trust fund. So New York State has definitely been an active partner in terms of building new construction, but those programs only work when you're talking about 50 units or more. How many municipalities in Westchester want to see 50 units at one time get built, and in one concentration? So that does create a dilemma right then and there. All right? How much, how many of your municipalities have the infrastructure to support 50 units in one place? All right? Even, even New Rochelle, where you can try and build.[1737.33] New Rochelle has recognized that they have a serious issue with sewer capacity and water capacity. They've got to do significant upgrades right now because they improved all this development. So again, we're working with that right now. They need permits too, don't worry.
I don't see you going there.
I think one of the problems too is that just how we don't want to do what you want to do. The zoning process, their approval processes, the cost of getting anything approved is so prohibited that this zone you couldn't build affordable housing and you can't build it in our lifetime. And so unless the county is in a position to dictate some of these municipalities how they're going to deal with the approval process, you're going to have to burn law.
And as you know, we have no control, we have over the municipality's. While we do take regulations on the referrals.
Could the county do a template for like a permit, a building permit? So it's the same across the board?
That's actually not a good idea.
That's a suggestion.
That's what other towns do.
Yeah, I have that idea.
You know, the Dallas, and the county runs the building.
Oh, now you know. Even in New York State, that's what counties have.
It's not what's going on here. You've got 43 municipalities, 43 fire departments, 43 local police departments. Just call the phone and call 911 for emergency.
Right.
And you guys are going to say, what county are you in? Is it New Rochelle? Is it Swarstedale? Because I got to know which one I'm in. I got to show which areas.
I hear you.
Talking about government, you know, getting in the way of things like affordable housing. A lot of us here are the people who provide affordable housing. And we recently had a new rent law passed. And one of the aspects of it, basically, or a couple of them, discouraged in a big way, the investment in affordable housing and.
Invested in existing market rate houses.
That's right.
Seriously, I saw that.
Right. And so you're going to be in a situation where some of these low rent departments are going to come up. And the finances just don't work based on what's in law.
Right.
And they're just going to disappear. And so the number of affordable housing units is going to decline. And then if it continues over a long period of time with this lack of investment, you're going to have things like fires, you know, where if you have leaks, you have water and electricity doesn't match, doesn't go together. You're going to lose big units and tragedies. And that's a situation where, I don't know, you could say, we didn't do it, the state did it. But people may ask about that. But in this kind of a presentation of affordable housing, basically, you got to stop the spigot from, you know, disappearing out the bottom. The fact is, there are a lot of buildings here, old buildings, that have good bulbs. And they just need a little tender care, systems have to be upgraded. Or you have a situation like you have with New York City Housing Authority where they have 34 million dollars of infrastructure that has not been built over a long period of time. So I don't know, if anybody ever asks you whether that's going to help you provide affordable housing, I think you know what.
Oh, no, I know. When we were doing those rental apps, that's true. First thing we did was organize a change to the municipalities to understand what that meant. Because I'm telling the municipalities, understand the bird that you're now under. How can they enforce property law because you can't invest in properties that is a stream business and all that? We truly have it, all right?
And you couldn't rent some of these apartments because they wouldn't satisfy. Somebody could go to the building department and say, this is subsidy.
That's why I think I was surprised you had any EDPs as well. Because I expected to see more warehousing.
The fact is, those numbers also, we live with numbers every year. And they say there are 25,000 in Westchester and that's now 34, 10,000 units. I mean, that's like a big difference.
Thank you. Because I, when I saw that number, I was like, there's no way.
Somebody's got to check the numbers.
Okay, not in the long, but they did, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jane Burris.
Hi. I attended one of the community sessions that had input into the survey in Mount Vernon. And what I heard was that the official definition of affordable is not the definition of affordable underground. And that people simply cannot even afford affordable and affordable housing. And even if you build new affordable housing, people can't afford it. So what can we do to address that real gap?
So what you're telling us during the course of the unders, in terms of undertaking the study, we did do a couple, a couple of hour recessions because we wanted to hear what the general public got to say about housing. And so all of a sudden, I started at the community college and all of a sudden, I was saying, and yeah, the outcry was even affordable housing is not affordable to many people because we're setting those equal limits, I told you, 80%. And so a family that's only earning $93,000 for, out of 83% of median. There's a lot of families who earn a lot less than that. But as the county executive has said repeatedly, for us to go where it needs even more subsidy. So and New York State generally wants to stay around 16%. Sometimes they'll let you go higher, but sometimes you got to go lower. So but you don't also want all in one place, all the units to be at one affordable level. You want some variety even within that structure. So yeah, there's no question, there's need at all levels, there's needs all over the county. But unless municipalities want to see more subsidized housing, it's going to be really difficult for the county to meet that need as well.
We have a question from Eric Hager.
Eric.
Hey, Eric. Thanks for coming to my conversation. So this question came about at a community and I think America was invited to make a comment there. And so the comment was, you want to build affordable housing, public housing, why don't you use public land to have this house in Brooklyn? Why are we using private property and having the government buy that from us at whatever they can afford to pay for that housing? Why you have all this land in the county, why can't we use some of that to provide ease of use?
That's a good question. And I am prepared to answer that one. So in Westchester County, there's only 30 county departments that are allowed to own land. Parks Department, which is all parks land, you're not allowed to get rid of parks land unless you replace it, okay? Then our Department of Environmental Facilities, that all their land has your waste water treatment plant, okay? Or the Department of Health Works, which uses the rest of the county land. Okay, no other department in the county is allowed to own land. The county has already gone many times, we get all the land that we have, okay, to see what's available. And many of you know this already. If there's a piece of undeveloped land in Westchester, there is generally a reason why that property has not been developed. And so the ability to develop it, see slopes, wetlands, drainage issues, whatever it is, no access to the roadways, if there's, you know, and unfortunately, in the past couple of decades, when there's even been locally, local developers trying to buy or trying to produce some housing and the neighbors come up to the municipality, to the state, to whoever, and say, buy that land so it doesn't get developed. And then they put deep restrictions on it, you know, parkland, whatever it is. So generally, state can, not a whole lot of public land available, all right? I know Westchester County has been able to have every site that we have left. I mean, literally, we are down to the fact that inside, anybody knows grasslands? Inside the oval, the grasslands is pretty much all that's left. There's not even grasslands, we have sites that are available. You know, we're working with a developer on the west side, to see what other potential exists. So but that's why the county is willing to step up and say, okay, we'll help you buy land because we don't have land, all right? The land that we, the little bits and pieces of land that the county is trying to dispose of right now, you know, there's a little bit of property right along, and it's along that street, the parkway. The only person who's right next door really can take use of that property. There's one right next to me, roster parkway, if ever you have any one way things. With the cemetery across the street. You know, there's a gas line that runs through it. There's a reason all this land is not that we have.
So wait, hold on though. There's two major properties right now that are waiting to be bought up. And you have United Hospital in Westchester. And you have the college in New Rochelle, that they have just won.
They've been tried at Park, but they're not selling the lands.
I guess you're going to be all the parkland and say, wow. Why can't we do that here? Why can't we do that?
Think of what you were able to do. We look at these underutilized parcels that might have parking lots on there and say, why can't we build it? All right? Or the building that had an office park all the way in the back and the rest of it was really underutilized and was able to create 14 townhouses and replace the office space. So again, we look at other properties and buildings that had other uses before to see how might we be able to bring new life. We've taken the middle school, the beach school I made it into 130 minutes a year. We've taken a couple churches now, where we took a bank building in Austin. We've taken an old warehouse in Irvington along the water park. It's now a library downstairs and it's 20 some odd units of affordable housing above. So we're looking, again, at existing structure, the adaptive reuse of existing buildings because the land is not necessarily available.
Too bad we didn't take it as a partner for what we really needed for, which is housing. Hundreds and hundreds of acres throughout the county that's never touched, that's older of ours. And I guess that's a stage.
But because it's never been developed, we don't want to know the archaeological review that you have to go through to see what Indians used to be there. But we have a lot of secrets.
Battle Park City, crazy, right? The city needed more land, so they built it and they created Battle Park City. How, is that crazy up here? I owe about the environmental issues that I'm just saying, assuming you can work. How crazy is the idea of building buildings by the layers?
It's crazy.
If that's on the municipality, amount of what they can't fix.
Sea level rise.
Yeah, but I'm saying, and the thing we have now, you're going to lose. Air around Las Vegas.
Right, one on us.
Island, you're going to lose.
We have a reason, land that around our rest of our.
One possibility is going up.
The hurdle is set of crawling out.
What is the planning bomb? Last year, who had that just a plan?
Yeah.
Given proposal by someone who wanted to be in the middle of city Mount Vernon for third source. And you said, I believe you said, I don't think so. Instead of voting for Mount Vernon for third source, whereas White Plains has 22 sources. Younges has 22 sources. Those people were coming with a lot of money and they left. And they voted for third source. You need to build up, you need to allow that.
But you got to make sure you like appropriate infrastructure in place to support that.
So if there's also social consequences to building, okay? So you might, you could provide more housing, but you might create other issues or problems that the city doesn't want to build. I'm obviously not exactly the best, the best living conditions, you know? And White Plains towards all the ones down.
There's a fault.
So this is a wonderful conversation and this is just the start of the conversation. It's one I want to sort of leave you with. We're going to be coming back to this theme again and again. I want to thank very much the community for being here.